We good? Okay. Here we go. Good evening. I'd like to call this regular council meeting and council budget meeting. Your order. Madam Clerk, may I please have a roll call?
Excuse me, Councilor Danforth.
Here.
Councilor DeMay.
Here.
Councilor Higgins.
Here.
Councilor Mathen.
Here.
Chairman Dor.
Here.
Councilor McGowan.
Here.
And Councilor Coles.
Councilor Pelletier is excused, yes. Will you please all rise and remove your caps while and please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, I see we have adjustments to the agenda. Where is my Mr. Manager? He disappeared on me. Here he is.
Yes, sir. We have updated proposed FY twenty five school budget. And then orders ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-five, ninety-eight, one hundred, one oh one, one oh two, one oh seven, and one oh eight. Also, the wastewater warrant has been updated.
Okay, thank you. All right, I need approval of the minutes for the April ninth, twenty twenty-four special meeting and the April eleventh, twenty twenty-four regular meeting.
So.
Second.
Motion by Council de May, second by Council McGowan. Any council discussion? Down to the public. Back to the council, all those in favor? It's unanimous, six one, six zero. Alrighty. We have no special presentations. So. Would we prefer to go into the municipal, in the order we have right now? We order sixty-eight would be the public hearing for the second public hearing for the municipal. Or would you rather, you want to stay right with that, or would you rather go to the school? All right, let's go first with the order sixty-eight, twenty twenty-four, public hearing for the fiscal twenty twenty-five municipal and wastewater budgets. Council McGowan, would you please read the order?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is ordered, order number sixty-eight, twenty twenty-four. It is ordered at the Millinocket Town Council. Enter into a public hearing for discussion on the FY twenty twenty-five municipal and wastewater budgets.
It's motion by Council McGowan, second by Council de May. Any council discussion? From the public? Back to the council, all in favor? It's unanimous. Six zero. All right. We are now officially in a public hearing. Mr. Manager, I turn it to you.
Fantastic. I'm gonna enlarge this a bit. Can't fit it all on one screen, but keeping with tradition here. Presenting an overview on what we'll go through shortly. This one is more specifically for the general fund, but have the information on here. Most important is that since our last meeting, we've gone through and made some adjustments, some discoveries. And if several cuts along the way, we are now happy to say that we are eighty-five thousand, six hundred seventy-seven dollars and seventy-three cents below last year's tax raise. So if you remember Thursday of last week, we started the meeting about ninety-eight thousand dollars and change over the tax raise of last year. Now we are almost the opposite. So that's some really good progress in the last week and I appreciate the support on. Some of those cuts came from the council during the thing and then we did some deeper dives throughout the week. Does anybody have any questions on that document before I jump into the overall wastewater budget?
No, I just would like to say real quickly that I appreciate your effort and the effort of the staff as well as the counselors to bring this budget in below last year. I think it's, and still be able to offer what we've offered out as far as adjustments to salaries and things. So congratulations and thank you for your efforts. All yours.
You, sir. All right, I am gonna move into wastewater expenses. Yeah. This is the second final hearing. We'll stick with the same order. We're gonna go department difference and total, then take any questions along the way. Department, page one, Department two one zero zero wastewater administration. We are at a difference of ten thousand, three hundred dollars for a total department budget of one hundred, eight thousand, four hundred dollars.
Any questions?
I can actually enlarge that for the projector as well a little bit, I think. That more visible for folks in the room? All right.
Any questions from the council? Comments? Public? Let's move on.
Just make sure you keep an eye on the screen. The visibility is different, but I think that their pictures will rearrange if they put their hand up. Besides us, I have four six. Nope. Five. And then looks as though another city manager is joining. All right, so that puts us at the six. All right, moving on. We are now page two, two two zero zero wastewater protection. These are our insurances over there. As notified by the insurance company, we are at a difference of four thousand, six hundred fifty-six dollars for a total budget there of thirty-three thousand, seven hundred fifty-six dollars.
Any council questions or comments? Public? Seeing none, let's move on.
All right, skipping ahead to page four. This is wastewater operations, Department two four zero zero. Total difference for that department is twenty-six thousand, four hundred ninety-five dollars. That is a total department budget of four hundred one dollars, four hundred, one thousand, nine hundred eighty-four dollars.
Any councils, questions or comments? Down to the public? Seeing none, let's move on.
Right. Page five, wastewater pump stations, Department two five zero zero. We are at a difference of six thousand, two hundred dollars. Total budget eighty-four thousand, three hundred dollars.
Everyone good? Down to the public? Seeing no one, let's move on.
Page six, wastewater collection, Department two six zero zero. This is a difference of fourteen thousand, four hundred dollars. This is a total department budget of forty-five thousand, two hundred dollars.
Any council comments or questions? Public? Seeing none, let's move on.
I'll just point out that part of our discovery throughout the week was the increase in operation of the flusher truck. So you'll see the expense on this side and then as a increase in revenue on the general fund budget where the public works, crew is, you know, operates that machine. All right, page seven wastewater debt service. This is loan payments. So this is Department two seven zero zero. This is dropping currently by one thousand, five hundred thirty-five dollars. Total debt payments throughout the year for wastewater, we're looking at two hundred fifteen thousand, four hundred thirty-four dollars.
Any council comments or questions? Down to the public? Seeing none, let's move on.
Oops. All right. Yep. Going home. All right, page eight. Department twenty-eight hundred. This is wastewater capital improvement. There was a little bit of confusion going over this the last week. We had the correct number in the overall budget, but the document that I had screen shared was missing a couple of the items in the capital plan. So this is the full breakdown of that. It does include the necessarily necessary replacement of truck. And then the slow runner repairs and that interceptor that we talked about for
Yep.
Cameron, that line. So the total wastewater capital improvement is one thousand, one hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars.
Any questions, comments from the council? From the public? Let's move on.
That concludes wastewater expenses.
Okay.
Now, we get to talk about the money they bring in. Page one, wastewater revenue. Twenty-one hundred wastewater administration. This is a total revenue of one million, eighty-six thousand dollars.
Any questions or comments? Public? Let's move on.
I'll just point out real quick that, you know, it shows some drastic decreases over there on that last column that's related to grant funding that's no
No longer available.
No longer in use. All right. Page two, Department two two zero zero wastewater protection. That's a big old zero. And we're gonna go to page four. Department two five zero zero. This is pump stations. This is really just the revenue from the RV. Pump station up there at the chamber building. That's three thousand dollars.
Council comment, questions? Public? Let's move on.
And that's it.
That's it? Alrighty.
All right. Wastewater is
Completed.
So easy and fun. So we are going to go into general fund expenses now. This is you know, like I said, our final draft after quite a bit of tweaking in the last week to bring that in under by eighty-five and change. So page one, this is Department zero one zero one, general government. Difference in this department is thirty-eight thousand, three hundred ninety-eight dollars. Total department budget is four hundred twelve thousand, fifteen dollars.
Council questions or comments? From the public? Seeing none, let's move on.
We're gonna go to page three. This is Department zero one zero three, elections and registrations. We're looking at a slight decrease in this department. It's one thou, by one thousand, one hundred eighty-seven dollars. Total department budget, eleven thousand, nine hundred four dollars.
Comments or questions? Public? Seeing none, let's move on.
And again, that savings there is related to turning the clerk's office down on election days and using the same personnel. Page four. This is town clerk's department. This is a difference of fifteen thousand, one hundred twenty dollars. Total department budget, two hundred ninety-one thousand, two hundred twenty-eight, eighty-eight dollars.
Council comments or questions? Public? Seeing none, let's move on.
Page five. Zero one zero seven, assessing. Major increase on this one is related to additional time for the assessor to complete specific projects. Again, an overall cost savings compared to contracting that service out to another organization. The total difference is forty-five thousand, three hundred thirty-seven dollars for a total department budget of one hundred forty-one thousand, nine hundred thirty-seven dollars.
Council comment or questions? Down to the public? Seeing none, let's move on.
Page six, Department zero one zero eight municipal building. This is expecting a decrease of thirty thousand, four hundred forty-six dollars. Total department budget, one hundred twelve thousand, two hundred eighty-four dollars.
Questions or comments? Public? Let's move on.
Page seven is our audit report, zero one zero nine. We are expecting that to increase by five thousand dollars for a total of twenty-five thousand.
We good? Public? Let's move on.
We're gonna move to page nine, legal expenses. We've cut this back substantially, thirty-five thousand dollars. The total department budget here is forty thousand dollars.
Questions or comments? From the public? Let's move on.
Page ten, zero one one two administration. Moment. This department has a difference of five thousand, seven hundred twenty dollars. That is mostly related to the computer support contract signed last fall. And total budget there is ninety thousand, nine hundred five dollars.
Yes, Council de May.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
With the recent events of the parking lot, lease agreement being broken. Is it appropriate for us to strike the one thousand, one hundred twenty dollars from this year's budget?
I would say that
Do you want me to speak to that?
Yeah, would you please?
Thank you.
So yes, we were, our April payment had been returned by the property owner who also delivered a termination of lease agreement. The plans on their side of the conversation are not finalized yet. He did notify me that if there was no tenant and if it was still available, he would re, you know, get back in touch with me to take over that lease again. If anything, I would suggest trimming it back unless you want to revisit it at a future date. But right now, it's kind of up in the air whether or not it will be available or not. Don't have a final answer.
Yep, certainly go right ahead, Council.
Thank you. Thank you for that input, Mr. Manager. I'm in favor of getting rid of that line. I am not in favor of renting that lot under the circumstances.
Thank you. Any kind of the council comment on that line? I am thinking that amount of money could easily be adjusted should his business venture fall through and he decides that he wants to go ahead and lease it back to the town if we so choose to do it. In the meantime, we might as well I find he changes his mind very little on when he makes a decision. So for right now, I would say I would support Council de May to take that out of the budget. And that, what line are we, could you be specific, Council de May, on the line you wish to remove?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Line two eight one five parking lot rent to the amount of one thousand, one hundred twenty dollars. I would like to have.
Any further council discussion? I assume that we will remove that line then.
Alrighty, we will make note of that and make sure to address the new total during the adoption order
Thank you.
Later on. All right.
All right.
So.
Any other discussion on this page? From the council? Down to the public? Seeing none, let's move on.
We are on page eleven. This is the town revaluation. You'll notice that this is now set at zero. That was a large chunk of what we were able to find this week. We're glad that we did. Actually, our wonderful treasurer here, Beverly, came up with it and then, and then, you know, after several conversations, we got to the bottom of it. This was not offset by revenue on the other side. The entirety of the project funding was previously allocated through orders in this last year. So we've decided to address it much like the grants are. So as we spend that throughout the year, we will take from that lot of funding and then put it into the budget as it gets spent. So you'll notice as we go through the year and we talk about spending quarterly, the expenses will go up and the revenue will go up. Because the funding is already in place for that. We don't have to tax on.
Nice catch, Madam Treasurer.
That's it. That's a big old zero and it's a difference, it's a decrease of fifty-three thousand, six hundred twenty dollars.
Any council comments on your down to the public? Let's move on.
Page twelve, Department zero one one four, planning code development. This is a decrease of twenty thousand, four hundred seventy-six dollars. Total department budget is forty-six thousand, seventy-five dollars.
Any council comment on on this? Down to the public? Seeing none, let's move on.
Getting into economic development, page thirteen, zero one one five. The, you'll notice that line one five three three K A E T Catane area television. That has the three thousand dollar increase requested by the council. And then the discussed decreases in communication contract, economic development. We are now at a department budget of well, let me talk about the decrease, seven thousand dollars. And then a total department budget of seventy-five thousand, four hundred eighty dollars.
Any council comment on this? No questions? Public? Seeing none, let's move on.
Page fourteen, zero one one eight, community initiatives director. This has a difference of twelve thousand, six hundred forty dollars. Total department budget here is one hundred, two thousand, one hundred seventy-nine dollars.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, down to the public? Let's move on.
Page fifteen is harbor grants that are no longer in effect. Well, currently, so those are all zeros. Page sixteen, we're going police department, zero two zero one. That is a difference of fifty-eight thousand dollars for a total budget of eight hundred forty-eight thousand, eight hundred seventy-four dollars.
Any questions or comments on this line? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr.
There was some question last week about final numbers on that.
Right.
It provide an update. I think I shared it with several of you earlier. We did receive the draft of the new contract and we are spot on with that number. So
Good.
That's exactly what we're expecting.
Any questions or comment? Public? Let's move on.
Jumping to page eighteen, Department zero two zero three, this is fire department. Total difference, twenty-eight thousand, one hundred two dollars. Total department budget, ninety-seven thousand, two hundred nineteen dollars.
Any questions or comments? From the public? Let's move on.
Page nineteen, ambulance. Difference, twenty-nine thousand, two hundred fifty-seven dollars. Total department budget, two hundred forty-three thousand, five hundred twenty-eight dollars.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, public? Seeing none, let's move on.
Page twenty. Zero two zero five, fire and ambulance general. This is a difference of one hundred ninety thousand, four hundred forty-eight dollars. There is much of that in the additional positions that were added throughout the year that this is the first year that those would be included in the
Right.
The actual fiscal budget. Total department budget, one million, thirty-four thousand, eight hundred six dollars.
Any questions or comments? From the public? Seeing none, let's move on.
Page twenty-one, community services. Hydrant rental, streetlights and traffic repair. That's a difference of twenty thousand, one hundred eighty-two dollars. Total budget, five hundred eighty-three thousand, one hundred eighty-two dollars. And before the question is raised, I have not had the pleasure of connecting with their administration to discuss the pricing on that.
You knew it was coming.
Since our last meeting.
Any other questions or comments on this other than the sheer volume, pardon the expression, number on the hydrant rental that is there? Any other, nothing? Down to the public? Seeing nothing, let's move on.
Page twenty-three. Zero two zero nine, these are our insurances rates set by the company. Difference of nine thousand, one hundred forty-five dollars. The total is one hundred nineteen thousand, one hundred, two hundred ninety dollars.
Questions or comments? Public? Seeing none, let's move on.
Page twenty-five, Department zero two one three, enforcement officials. This is a difference of four thousand, seventy-seven dollars for a total budget of eleven thousand, one hundred sixty dollars.
Questions or comments? Public? Let's move on.
Page twenty-six, Department zero two one four, dog constable. Difference of six hundred forty-six dollars. Total budget, fifty Difference of $646. Total budget, $15,616.
Questions or comments? Public? Let's move on.
All right, we are on page 28. And this is 0300 Fringe Benefits. We are expecting a retirement in the near future. Or in next year, I guess would be a great way to say that. We're looking at total budget there, $48,255.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, let's move on.
Page 29, Public Works Administration, 0402. This is a difference of $12,498 and a total department budget of $125,948.
Questions or comments? From the public? Seeing none? Let's move on.
Page 30, 0403 Garage Maintenance. Total difference here, $4,500. Total department budget, $38,500.
Questions or comments? From the public? Seeing none, let's move on.
Page 32, Department 0407 Public Works Roads and Construction. This one bleeds into the second page. The total difference on this is $154,000, the bulk of which is, was suggested in paving budget. $154,048.2 and a total budget of $1,488,556.
Counselor McGowan?
Go ahead. I think we both noticed it at the same time.
What happened?
I was just noticing that the road paving is at $475,000. I don't remember us decreasing that. I thought it was supposed to be at $500,000. No, we talked about it, but it didn't pass.
The vote was five to two, Counselor Dan Fortinai's. He failed.
Yes, it did not pass to reduce that vote, that line. So that
Thank you.
That amount should be $500,000.
We will adjust that and the department.
Which is why we didn't want the parking lot.
But I do have a question on that line.
Certainly.
I recently heard from the chairman and he explained to me that between yourself and Public Works Director, you had a conversation and $500,000 is all going to be able to do exactly what you guys had planned to do. Could you explain that a little bit more?
Sure. So well, we'd, we'd come up with a list of suggested streets and areas to pave sidewalks. The total list came in at like 750,000. So, you know, it's going for $125, $125 a ton right now. So with the 500, we would start at top of the list of the most pertinent needs and work towards the bottom and get get as far as we can that amount of money.
And as I said to you the other day, I don't remember a time where tar or asphalt has been as high as it is this year. So $125 a ton really does take into consideration, if you don't mind, Brian, what was, what were we getting, paying a ton last year? We were paying $125 last year? I don't, I don't remember a ton. Also, I, to, to Counselor Mackens, I'm sorry, Michigan Street didn't make the cut.
Oh, now she talks.
We please to get tired. All right. Any further discussion on this?
No, you know, there are, there are, you know, some, some good sections of sidewalk in there. That's definitely a loud outcry from the community. They, they do cost significantly more money than paving roads because it's a lot more labor intensive with hand tools. You know, so we could certainly have further discussion on that list at some point and then see if there are any other more pointed direction you want to take. But, you know, I think the list is pretty good as it stands and we'll do as much of it as we can.
Now, I have, in the past years, I have come to know that the Public Works Director, when he brings the list up, he's taken the time to go over the roads. He knows which ones are need the most work and are the most needy. So I, even though it may not necessarily jive with some things that I was thinking or hoping for, they are the essential list, as I think it's.
I'm just waiting to see my own road on there.
Get in line. All right. Any other council comments or questions on this? Down to the public? Backed, let's move on. I was gonna go ahead and ask for the vote, I really was.
Let's just, let's just keep going back and forth. All right, page 35, Department 0409 Transfer Sites. This has bleed it into the second page. This is a total difference of $43,114. Total department budget of $513,956.
Any council comment or questions? Down to the public? Seeing none, let's move on.
Page 37, 0501 is our contracted agreement with the library. That is a difference of $25,000. That is a total budget of $150,000.
Questions or comments? Public? Seeing none, let's move on.
Page 39, 0700 Debt and Interest. This one decreasing by $32,469 for a total a total of $107,204.
I will say that I don't think I have seen in a long time debt and interest that low. So congratulations, we've done a good job.
Wonderful thing. Now let's bond some big projects.
Yes. Now it's time for some big projects. Yeah, let's push it back up there. Any council comment or question? Public? Seeing none, let's move on.
All right, we're cooking with gas now. Look at all these blank pages. We are at page 45.
I just thought it came with its own theme music.
Play them up, Johnny. All right, so page 45, 0815 General Assistance. There's no difference expected in this budget, $17,150.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, down to the public? Let's move on.
Page 46, Public Health Welfare Agency, 0816. This, you'll notice the bottom two lines. The change requested last week, so there's the new, so what we did was we retitled my line to manager donations, kept $3,000 in it. At the request of council, we added the donation line with $5,000 in it. That would take care of the expected donations, the larger ones that we receive throughout the year. So the total budget there is $10,415.
Questions or comments? Public? Seeing none, let's move on.
This is page 47, Cemetery, 0902. We have a difference here with $11,497. Total budget of $76,837.
Questions or comments? Down to the public? Seeing none, let's move on.
Recreation. This budget is also a chief major. The difference is just $4,731. Total budget, $207,986. Well, I think the most substantial increase there you'll notice is the fertilizer seed. So that, that's gonna make sure that we don't get in a situation like we were last year where we had the massive crab infestation on the fields. They had gone untreated for a very long time. So those are gonna get treated regularly from now on.
Good, thank you. Any council comment or question? Down to the public? Seeing none, let's move on.
Jumping to page 52, says 1009 Snow sled ATV. Difference here is $44,220. Much of that is difference in the ATV trail grant. Total budget here, $133,500.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, let's move on.
Page 54 Airport Operations, 1101. Total difference, $11,589. Total budget, $202,386.
Any council question or comments? From the public? Seeing none, let's move on.
Page 55 Airport Business. This is the inventoried items that are sold for profit at airport. Difference is $5,200. The total cost is $85,600.
Counselor questions or comments? Public? Let's move on.
Page 56, 1106 Holiday Observation and Events. This one's flat, $20,000.
We good? Public? Let's move on.
Page 57, 1201 County Tax is increasing by $50,637. The total tax bill to Penobscot County is $358,138.
Any questions or comments? From the public? Let's move on.
Page 58 is Capital Reserve. I'll bring up the other sheet with that breakdown on it. Capital improvements, I mean. Department 1300. And probably a bit more visible, I imagine. So on here in the general fund, we have, the airport needs the fuel system upgrade. Company that services it is no longer in existence, so we need to change it. Public Works, Gravel Screen, pair of the bucket attachments for the loaders or loader, one or the other, and then refurbishing the hydraulics and two plow trucks. That's $60,000 between three. A replacement of the dugout, or well, the dangerous dugout at at the baseball field, that's $19,000. And, and have a piece of equipment for the fire and ambulance, $40,000. And then we have our regular contingency in there of $10,000 in case any of them, you know, wiggle out of their original quote. So the total general fund capital improvements is $169,000. See, when I bring this back up, that's a difference of $428,000 and change from last year. We got a lot taken care of in this, in last year's budget. We really don't expect any major purchases for several years ahead of us that we can certainly prepare for and take from a different angle. And then over here is the breakdown again of the wastewater capital budget. I know we're a little off topic on that, but that's the breakdown again, the truck, the contingency, the slow run of repair and the interceptor survey.
Mr. Manager?
Yes.
In seeing that we are ahead actually on our capital improvements, are we are we still sticking with our five-year plans as far as rotation of of capital improvement that we were using before, or are we going to go with something different?
I mean, it's kind of always a moving target. But, you know, major purchases like ambulances, fire trucks, that sort of thing, you know, has to stay on a on a pretty regular schedule. Otherwise, we can give and bend and move smaller purchases depending on the necessity from year to year.
Okay, thank you. Any other council comment or questions? From the public? Seeing none, let's move on.
That is a good point, though. I think when we come back into this next year, we may go back to that projected format. It shows what we're expecting over the year, over the next several years. So that's something we should bring back. This is the big old zero.
Any questions or comments on the big old zero?
Do you argue with zero? So we are now at the conclusion, page 61. That total has changed a little bit since the discussion. Do you know the I'm doing the calculations.
Eight million, eighty thousand, forty-three dollars.
Thank you. Eight million, eighty thousand, forty-three dollars. So if we go back to our original document here with the overview, we will shortly have math done out. Say we very loosely, I mean that.
Yep.
Baseball treasurer. Be usually crushing numbers.
No, there's no pressure. Just all eyes are on you.
Mike, maybe tell us a joke?
Oh, no. No, no. I am not getting on the front page of the Lincoln News again.
Counselor Demay, sing us a song.
This is the joke that
It has ass in you. Yes, absolutely.
Please sit in silence.
This is a serious and solemn time. I know you're checking in.
It's free. It's free, Star. It's free.
Thank you, everyone, for being patient.
Can you imagine if they weren't?
It'd be, it'd be, they'd be turning on you, not on us. We're elevated.
Yeah, right. So the new grand total. Is two million eight hundred thirteen thousand four hundred seventy nine dollars. Our new difference is. Sixty one thousand seven hundred ninety seven dollars and seventy three cents below last year's tax raise.
Congratulations.
Um and that that does include. The same use of the unassigned funds um that we had in previous versions, two hundred thousand.
Very good, does everybody have, well, I'm happy with the numbers, anybody else all set? All right. Mr. Manager, take it where we need to go.
We have. One more document to review, it is. Right here, this will be our revenue report. We are on page one, this is general government. We are expecting the revenue here to be two million four hundred ninety five thousand. Six hundred fourteen dollars.
Questions or comments? From the public? Let's move on.
We're jumping to page four. Department zero one zero four, town clerk's department. Um this is a difference of twenty four thousand six hundred dollars. And the total revenue here is nine hundred seventy one thousand nine hundred fifty dollars.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, let's move on.
Page five is assessing, uh we have a slight decrease here that we're looking at. A little over a thousand dollars. Uh the total anticipated revenue there is seven hundred fifty five thousand three hundred forty five dollars.
Questions or comments? From the public? Seeing none, let's move on.
Page six, municipal building zero one zero eight. We do not anticipate any changes in that this year. We're looking at sixty two thousand seven hundred forty dollars.
Questions or comments? Public? Seeing none, let's move on.
We're at page seven. Uh zero one one four, planning and code. Uh we're looking at an anticipated increase of three hundreds. Three thousand seven hundred twenty five dollars for a total of seven thousand dollars.
Questions or comments?
Which I still believe is quite modest. Compared to, you know, what we expect for development over the next year.
Any questions from the com- the public? Seeing none, let's move on.
Page eight, economic development, these are, this is pass through and then the. Um loan payment we received from our cataden. This is decreasing by a little over four thousand dollars. Uh total anticipated revenue here, one hundred sixteen thousand six hundred seventy six dollars.
Questions or comments? From the public? Let's move on.
We are jumping to page eleven, zero two zero three, fire department. Anticipating a modest. Three thousand five hundred dollar increase there. I would expect that to be much higher as we. Figure out the new year with the new system and the uh new rates, so we're building in a safe ten thousand dollars there.
Council questions or comments? Public? Let's move on.
Page twelve, zero two zero four, ambulance. You can just imagine me repeating myself. This is a difference nineteen thousand dollars, um anticipated revenue. Three hundred seventy seven thousand five hundred dollars.
Questions or comments? From the public? Let's move on.
For making a big jump to page sixteen. Public Works Administration. This is mainly the flusher truck reimbursement from. Uh wastewater department. That's increasing by eleven thousand dollars and. Uh we're looking at thirty six thousand two hundred fifty dollars.
Council questions or comments? Seeing none, count from the public? Also seeing none, let's move on.
Uh jump into page eighteen, zero four zero seven, Public Works, uh roads and construction. We are expecting forty five thousand dollars from the L R A program for uh bathing assistance.
Questions or comments? From the public? Let's move on.
Page twenty, zero four zero seven, transfer site. We are expecting a decrease in revenue rate there, nine thousand four hundred dollars. Total anticipated revenue, one hundred twenty two thousand five hundred dollars.
Any questions or comments?
Please, folks, take this opportunity to advertise our recycling facility and dump pickers. Really would enjoy making full use of that facility and uh making a better effort to earning a profit. This message brought to you by. The guy who does the budget.
That being said, any questions from the public? Seeing none, let's move on, please.
I've been here since seven thirty this morning. All right. We're flying through here. We are jumping all the way to page twenty eight, this is general assistance, this is a seventy percent reimbursement from the federal government. Uh state government. And it is twelve thousand five dollars.
Questions or comments? Public? Let's move on. Yes, sir. Counselor Higgins? Where would you like to go back to, and yes, thank you for turning my.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to know if we can go back. Um to. Page eleven.
Page eleven?
Department zero two zero three.
Okay, just one second, let the manager pull that up.
Got it.
Got it, okay.
Just noticing that Penobscot County stipend is going up. But the scatterquits is staying. Level.
Stay flat.
Yeah, those contracts are uh have different timings. So we're. Think we get into that this next year? John Chief Cody confirms. Yeah, they just have different start and end dates, that's all.
Yeah, they're staggered. All right, thank.
Thank you, that answers my next question on page twelve, so.
Your next question is on page twelve?
Thank you. It's already answered.
All right, thank.
Thank you.
All right.
Think we were at. Did we do twenty eight? We did, right?
On page twenty nine.
Twenty nine! We're gonna actually go to page thirty. I think twenty nine was. Zero, so page thirty, this is zero nine zero two cemetery, we're looking at twenty thousand dollars of anticipated revenue there.
Any comments or questions? No, no, don't even, all right, public?
Anybody wanna go back to page five or anything?
We are. Want to keep everybody awake. All right.
All right, page thirty one. Recreation, zero uh one zero zero two. Uh this is a drop to zero. From a thousand.
Comments, questions? Public? Seeing none, let's move on.
Page thirty two, one zero zero nine, um this is where you find the offset of the snow sled ATV program. Uh that has changed by the amount noted on the other side, forty four thousand two hundred twenty dollars. Uh the total program budget, one hundred twenty one thousand two hundred dollars.
Questions or comments? From the public? Seeing none, let's move on.
That brings us over to page thirty four, uh Department one one zero two, airport business. We are expecting a difference of three thousand dollars there. And total anticipated revenue, one hundred twelve thousand seven hundred eighty dollars.
Any questions or comments from the council? From the public? Seeing none, let's move on.
Well, that brings us to the end. Page forty two. Uh this gives you our total anticipated revenue. Five million two hundred sixty six thousand five hundred sixty four dollars.
Hey, any questions or comments? From the public? That's it? Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Appreciate you all for your support and patience.
We're good, nobody needs a break or anything?
Oh, I need a break.
You need a break?
I need at least a quick one.
All righty, uh let's take a break for five minutes and we will reconvene at six forty.
Yeah.
That's the one we found.
You're welcome, sorry. System administration. Want me to repeat?
Yes, would you please?
Yes. The FY total budget for system administration is eight hundred sixty-four thousand seven hundred seventeen dollars and eight cents. The difference of twenty-five thousand five twenty-eight eleven. It's an increase of three point oh four percent. School administration. Four hundred eighty-two thousand two thirty-eight thirty-six. It's a difference of twenty-one thousand four sixty-five seventy-nine, increase of four point six-six percent. Regular instruction. Two million six hundred eleven, two million six hundred sixty-one thousand seven forty-five ninety. It's a difference of a hundred thousand sixty-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents, that's also nineteen point nine one percent. Special education is up. One million seven hundred ninety thousand five hundred ninety-eight dollars and seventy cents. Difference of four hundred sixty-eight thousand six hundred two fifty-nine cents, seventeen point six-five percent. Staff and student support, four hundred ninety thousand nine sixty-four forty. Difference of eight thousand four hundred and forty dollars and eleven cents, one point seven five percent. Other instruction. Is three hundred thirty-seven thousand nine fourteen seventy-nine cents. It's a difference of. One thousand one hundred forty. Current technical education, twenty-eight thousand one dollars and cents. That's about seven hundred four dollars nine cents. Five eight cents. Facility maintenance. One million five hundred nine thousand five hundred dollars and seven cents. Of twenty-five thousand forty-three, increase of twenty-one. Transportation. Three hundred twenty thousand two ninety-seven cents. Difference of thirty-four thousand nine ninety-five cents. Debt service, ninety-five thousand five dollars and cents. Thousand one hundred eleven. Cent of point zero percent. Other appropriate. Seventeen thousand eight hundred fifty dollars and seventy-one cents. Difference of twelve one ten.
If I may ask. Is eight million six hundred eighty dollars and nine.
Nine six cents.
If I may ask. On the regular instruction, the special education. And the staff support. Are those increases from. Positions being moved from what was previously paid through the ARPA funds to the regular budget?
Oh, the mark, yes. As. Down. Negotiated on finalizing night. Budgeted five hundred dollars. Twelve.
Okay, thank you. Also, the facility maintenance. The amount that it was increased by the two sixty-five for eighty-three. Is that the the roof?
That is the roof project. I have frank post.
They're both together?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Counselor Demay.
Mr. Chairman. I just have a question for clarity. This FY twenty-five total of. Eight million six hundred eighteen thousand eighty-eight hundred nineteen dollars ninety-six cents, is that including the notations? That you gave us? Is that with the reductions and eliminations? So it was up over nine million before this figure, thank you.
Yeah, any other council questions? Seeing none, you're all set, we can move on.
Moving on to the.
No, that's fine. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Where are we moving to now?
We're moving to revenue resource project thousand twenty.
We're all there?
Yes. Okay. Yeah, I think we're all caught up with you. Go ahead.
So the local EPS test. Is currently one million two hundred eighty-five thousand eight thirty-four. That is up slightly. There. That was. Local debt service. It's ninety-five thousand five dollars and. Local to local appropriation. Is two million. One hundred dollars and cents. Local adult education, local appropriation. Two thousand eight hundred fifty dollars and seven one cent. One that was up. And local appropriations launch, thousand funding from here. Bush International Program, which is the funds that the school raises for international program. Here, so seventy-five thousand projected. UT tuition rate is up by five thousand at a hundred and twenty-five thousand. UT elementary special ed is staying flat funded at thirteen thousand hundred. Secondary special ed, fourteen thousand, also flat. T transportation is forty-four thousand, just up slightly for a thousand, that's increase. The negotiated agreement, the no agreement, yes. Athletic receipts are down to ten, ten thousand. Recreation department is fifty thousand flat funded. The building rental is up ten thousand or fifty-five thousand, negotiate agreement with kids. There is no great reimbursement. This line is our set funded at thirty thousand. The state allocation, three million nine forty-nine six thirty twenty cents, that's up hundred thirty-nine thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars and forty-four cents last year. The RMC says. Elementary special ed reimbursed at the fourth thousand. There is nothing for this secondary S page fine. Child development services, up five hundred dollars, I suppose three thousand five hundred. The new retired shared reach special ed director will get reimbursed for that as thousand, that's what Shelley talked about, the director.
Yes.
And then we have other financing sources, there's our undesigned balance, or carry forward of one hundred thirty thousand. That brings our total to eight million six hundred thousand eight hundred ninety-seven ninety-six cents.
Any council questions or comments? Seeing none, anything from the public? Let's move on.
Could I make a comment there?
Certainly, ma'am.
Um, I, Rhonda hasn't mentioned it, but the work that she's been doing with like getting our grants in line. I've mentioned it to you folks several times. On Tuesday of this week. DOE approved the five hundred thousand, five hundred six thousand seven hundred forty-four and eighty-two cents. That will be passed through DAS and then two two within a couple of weeks. So kudos for her for lining up that pass pass, um, big work and getting it done. And also on Wednesday, we got a reallocation grant approved for summer, so our entire summer school that will happen at Granite. Will be supported with sixteen thousand dollars, giving us a fully funded summer school program.
Congratulations.
Now on the county here, thousand twenty-five school budget.
Thank you, just a second, we're catching up with you.
Sorry.
No, that's fine. Yes. One right. The council chair, yeah. Page three. I think we're there. We're good.
So I'm gonna work my way bottom up.
Okay.
So our budget is eight million six hundred eighteen thousand five hundred ninety-seven ninety-six cents. Additional revenues that the schools just raised themselves, twenty-five thousand five hundred. Guest state funding from the seventy-nine and thirty-nine thousand forty-nine, pretty well. Three million nine hundred forty-nine thousand seven thirty dollars and. The local revenue. Four million two hundred ten thousand one seventy-six. Difference down is eleven seven cents. Extra pay is grand cost account now, four hundred ninety-one thousand nine forty-two.
So if I could stop you right there for just one second. So basically, the the adjustment from last year, as far as the total is concerned. Is that the number that's four ninety-one, three eighty-nine, forty-two, that is the increase from last year's budget?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Here above that is another total calculation. For the local appropriation, carry forward is only two hundred ten thousand three hundred seventy-six. Who's he carried forward is one hundred seventy, one hundred thirty thousand. And some first audit adjust. Got it? The calculation of difference local. Last previous case, five hundred seventy-seven thousand hundred dollars and four cents. Yes. Last. Here. Budget. Above that is million seven hundred thousand two hundred eighty-one dollars and seven cents. Launch. Houses. Have local adult education appropriate. Thousand. Thousand seventy cents. Additional local appropriation. Millions getting one hundred dollars and. Debt service ninety-five thousand. Cent. Second. Yes. Local shares, one thousand twenty-five thousand thirty-four.
Any questions or comments on what we just? Mr. Manager. Okay. We good? Do we have, I don't see any hands up. Okay, all right, thank you. See no comments or questions? Let's move on. That's what you have, okay? Okay. So if I'm reading this right, and I probably not. You're asking for, I mean, there have been some numbers that have bounced around that have been much higher, a little bit in the middle. But the what your, the amount that's increased. Right now with no additional cuts or anything else is four hundred and ninety-one thousand three eighty-nine forty-two. That would be the the increase without anything else removed or whatever. Okay. Alrighty. Yes, counsel, anybody have anything that they want to share or add or ask? I want to go ahead and give, since this is the first reading, I'd like to go ahead and give everything, give as much opportunity for input. Counselor Danforth, are you all set? Okay, oh yes. Certainly, Counselor Danforth, go right ahead.
Um, thank you for the numbers here today. I just want to let you know personally, I'm not ready to vote on this budget tonight, just because it was just presented new. I really appreciate the reduction in the numbers and where you've gotten it from. For me, it doesn't have to do with trust, I'm not trying to be punitive, I'm just not comfortable. You know, making a decision on the fly, so it's just about the process. I feel like that we should wait until our next meeting, two weeks from now. To to not to revisit this, to bring that back around, so I just wanted to make that clear. It's just because we just got this new, just before walking into the meeting, so it has to do about the process and not having a chance to digest it. Thank you. Thank you. I, and I guess to that point that I would just abstain if the rest of the council wanted to take a vote, unless we wanted to discuss tabling it, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, anything else to add? Counselor Higgins, are you?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I just want to say I concur with also Danforth, just. Receiving this tonight, really not having a chance to go get in depth onto it, so. But thank you very much for the effort to all of you.
Anyone else, Counselor McGowan?
I just want to thank you too, of course, I'm a little closer to the the matter than than my other counselors, so. I truly appreciate the work and I personally have seen firsthand. The work that Rhonda has done and I want to commend you, I know it has not been. I I don't want to back, but it it, she has done a fantastic job and I just want to publicly commend you for that. That the hours that you have put in are above and beyond what anybody could imagine. And I too want to thank you, Dr. Lane, I know that you are fiscally responsible, that you understand that you need to present a budget. That is good for the taxpayers, I understand a lot and I appreciate the cuts that you've made. You know, when I agree about tabling, I guess I would just say if any counselors have any specific questions, if there's any concern about wanting. More cuts that needs to be discussed now so that they can act. Accordingly, within the next two weeks, I don't want to surprise them two days before.
And I agree.
So if anybody has anything to say as far as that goes, please do it now.
Would anybody like to offer any suggestions on cuts? To the amount that was presented for the increase? Does anybody feel comfortable? Making those suggestions moving forward to try to. Work on the budget? Doctor, you and I have had discussion already as far as possibly going into some cuts a little bit more provided. That the town has your back. And if you would please elaborate on that a little bit, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, I I. When I, when we were here a couple of weeks ago, I talked to you guys about setting up a reserve account. Because as far back as I can see in looking at the budgets, there hasn't been a reserve account. And in my world, my way of thinking, that is something that even data made by law tells us that we can have nine percent of a budget. In a reserve account because it's for some unanticipated thing. A sewer system that needs something, some work, piping, like anything you can imagine. I was kind of panicking, thinking we have no money, if something big like that happens, I don't know what to do. And so I did talk with Councilor Door and he said that you guys have that. And if you have my back with that, I'm comfortable not establishing a reserve account. Because it, and it makes perfectly good sense, you know, you represent the town, that means you represent the school. So if something like catastrophic happens. You know, like you and I'll have a conversation about it and then it's, you know, funded, she was proper, and also. I'm comfortable with that. I will say that. The budget presented is in favor of. In favor of maintaining facilities so that as one of Milinocket's major employers, we have people who want to come. I know last fall, sorry to interrupt, I know last fall, there were a family that came to the school that I was talking with. And one of them was a doctor and he had two children that were going to split granite, they came here. And they decided not to come here. And it was just kind of like one of those moments where it's like, when when they made the choice not to, it wasn't because. But it became really clear to me that again, as one of the major employers in town, our school has to be good. It can't just be okay, it has to be good. We we will attract higher quality. Individuals in our system, in our storefronts, in the hospitals, like in even if the mill site fell off. You're not, you can't expect to have young families come in here and bring children if they don't see anything positive happen. And I I know that I talk your ear off and I tell you that we're making an app and got all kinds of programs going. And our facility is really beautiful, I know I've said this before too, our gym base is on advertised. But we we have to keep that, we can't let the momentum change. With the COVID funds, you guys made wonderful decisions, structural facility vision. And and that is evident and that's also money saving because it equated to efficiencies. My ask is, in my opinion, and I will do what you vote, but it is my opinion, it is for children. For our citizens and it's for our staff. Talking about sprinkler system, the roof, the curriculum, I really feel those things, I really do. If you say that for. Mill rates for our citizen. I respect that and will can take a look at that, but I really have not presented any that would. That block cut weeks ago. I just wanted to make that pitch.
And it's and it's heard, Counselor Demay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate my fellow counselors' opinions and thoughts. I I happen to share their their opinion. I do think that. Couple of weeks. We ponder all this stuff would be be acceptable and I don't have any specific ask, I know last year I was. The only counselor that asked for a three percent cut. In the general budget. I'm not going to do that this year. But I just want to say something in perspective. It's a nine percent increase. Generally, they've been around three, four, or five percent increases and I understand the world that we're living in and all the increases that you're up against and I do commend you greatly. For this. Deep cut that you guys already have done. So I say this with an with appreciation. A one percent cut. To the budget that's presented would be roughly eighty-six thousand. A two percent cut be a hundred and seventy-two thousand. A three percent cut would be. Two hundred and fifty-eight thousand ballparking. And that's about what a mill is. That's about what a mill is, so. For us to be attractive to businesses, I know that the. And they go hand in hand kind of with the conversation that you were just having, are we going to build this, are we going to build this, or how can we? How can we rise together and still be attractive for businesses that the town and our partners trying to work to? It's a high mill rate discourages people from coming here, but also you want to have. Invested in your education system because that's attractive as well. So.
I do go.
It's it's kind of a, it's a big picture. So that's just something to think about. If you could. Even move the needle, it'd be great, I'm not going to make that ask of you because you've already done a lot. But I'm sure to the citizens. Big picture, it would be helpful to them. Into the, so I'll just leave it at that, I do appreciate everything that you've done, this is great. It's almost cut in half of what you originally were requesting, so. Look forward to seeing this in another couple of weeks. But you know, and and Chair Vador is right, we do have you back and and I believe. From at least a couple of years ago, you guys are heading in a much, much better direction. So I applaud you.
Thank you, Counselor Demay, any other counsel comment? I would like to offer my thought here. Certainly. I would like ultimately to keep the mill rate in the town, right now, the mill rate in Milinocket. Conservatively is about twenty-eight-two. Okay, all right, I try to hedge my bets, just in case I get it wrong, yeah. Is twenty-eight-two. If at all possible. I would like to keep the mill rate under thirty, or thirty would be the maximum that I would be. Totally comfortable with, which means. Judging by what you have here. It means about a mill and three quarters, about one point seven five as far as an additional mill.
I I, of course, there are things I have it. I. Actually, I think it's on podium somewhere. I think that the estimation of dollar amount versus mill that was made.
Right.
Recently, was a bit high, I think that it's. We don't, I don't know exactly what it is in this moment, but the last I knew it was somewhere between two sixty and three hundred. Yeah, well, that fluctuates depending on the mill rate and the valuation, but. Just just for referencing your math.
Right.
Give or take a hundred thousand from where we were a few minutes ago.
Okay, so. I'm I'm asking. If whatever we, whatever you were able to do, coming back in two weeks. If you could be. Around four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Or thirty, right in that area. I would be greatly appreciative. And if it's at all possible to do, you know, it may not be, it may be, but certainly you're looking for. Direction and that would be the direction that I would ask.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
So in the, so we have carried forward.
Yes.
Four hundred and twenty thousand, last time we met, the comment was made that if it's race for education, for education.
Absolutely.
But I understand taxpayers always have been sensitive to to that level. So tell me what happened. With a roof repair, like that's not where you can have my back because that's a planned thing we need to do.
Right.
So if I say out of this, just throwing numbers around, if I say out of this that we have four hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which. Satisfies what you just asked. But I need a roof repair, so. How does something like that, that is quite costly, get done under these type of circumstance?
We could, but that would take. Counselor Demay has asked whether we could do it as a bond.
Okay.
I don't believe that, could we go low if we were decided to go ahead and try to help, could we? Usually bonds are fairly fairly large when we do through the main bond bank.
I don't know.
I'd have to look and see if there's a a lower limit, you know, I don't know if there's a a minimum. In your experience, have you ever, no? That would be.
We've always had rather high, when we bonded, we've always bonded rather high.
You know, I.
I don't give you any ideas, but we.
If there were, if there were going to be discussions of bonds for necessary upgrades at a school. At our school, I would either. You know, like we had discussed last week, continue the discussion of periodic support from our. Staff grant writer or try to lump some projects together to make it a more worthwhile effort. You know, when it comes to taking on debt.
I agree.
So we.
I would go one of those directions.
So we did talk to the DOE because they have revolving grants every year's and this type of work doesn't fit in that category. Not to say that there's other kinds, but the ones that are offered out there to public school. This just doesn't qualify and I'm not, I'm not making any suggestion here, I'm just asking a question on how how we do what we need to do for the citizens. How we do to maintain the facility, the great facility on us that we have. Yes, we will go back and take a look at this and provide with iteration number nine and maybe even ten. The next few days so that we can, you know, all be aware of this important stuff.
Understand that my request is, it's an ask.
Yeah.
It is not a demand, it is not a, you know. Line in the sand, it's just an ask.
Right.
If it can be obtained, wonderful, if it cannot be obtained for. If it can be obtained, wonderful. If it cannot be obtained for whatever reason, then we, we'll, we'll have that discussion.
Yeah, I, I'm just really concerned about um looking ahead today. For instance, I walked in and um everybody is talking about, you know, and we're on the cliff, same one we've all been talking about, but all of the budgets that are um being put together across our state, people are really feeling loss of position. And we had some loss of position. That's very challenging. Um, it affects people's lives. It affects our programs. And um I was telling Rhonda just a few minutes ago, I haven't even heard schools talk about um student teacher ratios for years. That's now part of the. Um, I'm afraid that it pick things down the road too long that in another year, when um the law passed recently for our support staff, they're gonna take the minimum from Title X and either one hundred and fifteen percent or one hundred and twenty-five percent as our base. So we have some skills, a lot of them, that will be changing next year. We did just finish a negotiation, but that will not hold and everybody in, in this group today anticipates that within two years, the teachers will also have that. Which at that point, every employee in our school system affected. We cannot sustain that as a community. We just can't. So looking at the um elimination, the jobs that have actually gone and are represented in this budget, as painful as this is, half look down the road, like we have to do some things now because next year, sitting before you may be five jobs, you know, I, it, it may not, but we don't have a lot of places to cut. It's not like we can close a building. It's not like we can get rid of a bus. Like when we look at what we really have, I'm just, I just want you to think about that. What we're doing this year does affect what's gonna happen next year and next year. I just don't want us to have to create our own.
Counselor Demay. Counselor Higgins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Dr. Elaine, um, I'm glad you mentioned the student to teacher ratio. Could you, off the top of your head, your student to teacher as well as your student and your teacher ed tech?
If you have that out. Two seventy-nine. We are, is on average, um at Granite Street, we have um a couple of classes. I think you should have the enrollment in your book.
Yes, we have that.
And so if, so if we look at that, um prepay, pay one, two, three, four, five, all have. So if you look at the numbers, they're fifteen to thirteen, thirteen to fifteen in that neighborhood. Um, we have a bubble going up through and so like as far as ed techs, ed techs will kind of like go with that bubble until they get through graduation, which is very common. Um, as far as our ed tech, like on our two seventy-nine, when we did our subsidy, that's the formula from the DOE. Um, we have ed techs that could probably get a little bit more reimbursement if you can. All. I can't say that we're heavy to ed techs because that is in relation to IEP. They should, um, behavior. We don't have a lot of general classroom ed tech, but those are necessary if our, our student teacher ratio. So say we put twenty-fourths in one classroom, so that perhaps you have two of that grade, that person wouldn't need full time ed tech. So we have to be responsive and, and fluid um in where we assign folks. And trust me, we've been talking a lot about fluidity and making sure people don't get stuck thinking that that's where they need to be because they need to be working. I'm not sure that answers the question.
I can work it. Other thing, I like what you folks did with the, the regional education director. And the savings there is, are there any other things that you might be able to consolidate like that?
Right, um. But I always have a plan. Probably premature to talk about a lot of it. Um, because I'm trying to look at the system, you know, like come in and see what does Millinocket have? What does Millinocket do? How can I, coming from the outside, look at it different, a little bit different time? Um, so I'm thinking that there, instead of taking percentages of um like secretarial support, maybe for this particular director, maybe it will be easier for her to have fun first. So I, I don't have any brand out, brand ideas at this time, but I'm just trying to keep my eyes. But and in, in the budget, you actually have a couple of other things that are built of be having a different set of eyes coming into them. And uh, but I'm open to suggesting things that have been, oh, you got one? I was gonna say things that you pride, you know, like sometimes somebody has a good idea and they try it, but it just wasn't executed right or not at the right time, right? So like, perhaps we're at the right time. I'm not gonna take any credit for it. It just worked out. Here, here.
Are you awesome? Yes, Counselor Demay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm glad that this conversation has been opened up because I would like to um, to talk to you in the rest of the school board. Is anybody, and I wanna preface this by saying no loss of jobs, no loss of staff. Has anybody recently looked at consolidation of the Millinocket School Systems into one building? And the reason why I say this, the last time I was on the council, I know a feasibility study was done by an outside source. Well, probably two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, and after an initial investment of reconfiguring some of the school, there was actually a cost savings to the, to the town of Millinocket into the school system. So in reference to that feasibility study and with you mentioning ongoing, things could change, and I'm not saying this year right now, but is somebody looking at those kind of studies for best outfitting the school, um best outfitting town?
You're looking for an internal con.
And I know that there's resistance, and I was part of some of those talks with out of town. Our neighbors. I'll put it that way, our neighbors. So within the town of Millinocket School Department System, and I certainly mean no loss of jobs just through attrition over the years. Um, scale back um until the need and make sure all the needs are met. Um, has that been been looked at by you and your staff with a fresh set of eyes?
Yeah, I, I have looked at the feasibility study and um I think that at this time, because both buildings are really in good shape and, and you actually, Granite Street is pretty full happening place. You know, there's, there's a lot of going on there over there. Um, I have not looked to combine into a building. I, I did read the study, looking to see where the classrooms are. There are some open spaces that stern, hands down, we can see them. We um renegotiated with kids' fees and have a three percent increase, which is a good thing. Um, but the state of Maine is looking to um do something more for middle students in the idea of career and technical. So they're, they're throwing out some ideas and some money with them um to get some programs going into the school. So that's one direction that my mind is going because if you've all had middle school kids, you know, they're not, yeah, they're, they're not elementary kids and they're not high school kids, right? So you can't go to a region program until you're a junior and you have that whole sixth, seventh, eighth grade like time when they're trying to figure out who they are, what they like. Um, so some of my thinking has gone in that direction because like I said, there's some money with it and there's quite a push from state um like that. We have some space. We might have to pull the traffic. Um, and um, but, but we do, we do have some space. Um, I can't tell you how quickly um that's going on, but I personally have had two conversations at the state level to see if, you know, like, how does Millinocket fit? Because like you have to drive into Millinocket and I was kind of thinking that if we could get some for those grades, right, maybe middle school kids to just attend a class like a you know, so that's more what I'm thinking of, ways to use that space to support. Um, and, and actually because I'm thinking of the projection, like I'm hoping our enrollment increases. Like it has, it, you know, it goes up to three, it goes down one or two, goes up six or seven. Um, but it's, it's kind of, it's held steady if not grown by one or two. Um, like every vacation that we get. But it's this progress, projection study that we're gonna do with data, um with the University of Maine could actually help us make decisions like that so that we could see if indeed three or four years from now, the projection is really that it will be less than we have right now, then we should. So that's kind of where I am now.
Well, uh, yes, Mr. Manager.
Several questions and answers ago, I just wanted to mention that uh if there's any conversation that needs to take place, recommendations between council and either school board or, or school administration, um I'm out of the picture next week. I'll be off, so please don't try to do that through me. Because it, it won't make it to the other side. So just cut me out of the equation and let me know what happens when I get back.
My presentation is better than yours anyway.
I absolutely, hands down.
Anyone else? Anyone from the public? Mr. Levin, please name and address. Can I tell you he got it? He could tell the season pro.
Scott Levin, three-third and Long Beach Street. I've been attending these meetings for the last month. I've talked to the council people. And each time I hear is that they messed up. And we're trying to catch up to what we should have done a long time ago. Now superintendent's done a good job, the school board's done a good job. Now I'm coming to you, telling you, asking you, this is today's standards now. We're talking about our kids. We're not talking about salaries like this and that, up and down. But you guys keep telling, saying each other each week, oh, we're coming up to today's standards. We wanna put for what's right right now, so next year we don't have a problem. School board's done all they can, and I believe that they deserve the consideration that this should just pass. Because it's bringing them up and bringing our kids up. I got two grandkids that's in school and the teachers are great. Everybody I've talked to is great. I don't agree sometimes with the increase because I looked at the increase, yes, it is. But I mean, uh, if you're gonna look for four hundred thousand to cut, let's go to the town and cut more. Because I don't agree with that budget. But I'm eating it out because there's no, it is no sense because there's nothing that's gonna change with it. So let's give the school a consideration, bring that school up to par and give them, give them what they want. I know it's the late thing because I'm looking at, I, the first thing too, there's a couple of lines I don't like. But I, I'm looking at what you guys are saying each and every week. You gotta bring it up. You gotta bring the town up to today's standards. So if we're gonna do that, we gotta do it with the school too. We've gotta bring the school to a great standard, and I think they've done all they can. And if they, they go back, like I said, you, you've gotta give it a try. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. Madam Clerk. Remind me, I need to come out of public hearing to do any type of motion, right? Thank you. Anyone else before we close this public hearing? Seeing no one? The public hearing is closed. Now, moving on back to the regular town council. I would like to offer at this time uh that we move to uh our regular orders. Which means we would now be on order number seventy dash twenty twenty-four, which now that I say that, I have to find it. Order number seventy dash twenty twenty-four, providing for general administration, is ordered that the, that one million, one hundred, oh, you have the new totals? Okay, uh then uh Counselor Danforth, will you please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're on order number seventy dash twenty twenty-four, and I have the new totals based on the changes we made just a while ago. So providing for general administration, it is ordered that one million, one hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars is hereby raised and appropriated, and the offices are authorized to spend set amount for the general administration departments of Millinocket as listed below for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five. General administration, one oh one, general government, four hundred and twelve thousand, fifteen dollars. One oh three, elections and registrations, eleven thousand, nine hundred and four. One oh four, town clerks, two hundred and ninety-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars. One oh seven, assessing, hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Municipal, one oh eight, municipal building, a hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars. One oh nine, audit, twenty-five thousand dollars. One eleven, legal services.
We have a difference with them.
Yeah, administrate, that's the next one. I'm not there yet. Yes, one eleven, legal services, forty thousand. One twelve, administration, eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five. Revaluation, zero. Three hundred, uh line three hundred for fringe, forty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars. The grand total is one million, one hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Is there a second? Motion made by Counselor Danforth, second by Counselor Higgins. Any council discussion on the order? Seeing none to public, back to the council. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Counselor Demay, can I please have you read order number seventy-one dash twenty twenty-four?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order number seventy-one dash twenty twenty-four, providing for community and economic development. It is ordered that two hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four is hereby raised and appropriated, and the offices are authorized to spend said amount for the community and economic development departments of Millinocket as listed below for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Community and economic development, line one fourteen, planning code and enforcement, forty-six thousand, seventy-five dollars. One fifteen, economic development, seventy-five thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. One eighteen, community initiatives director, one hundred, two thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Two thirteen, enforcement officials, eleven thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars total, two hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars.
Motion made by Counselor Demay, second by Counselor Danforth. Any council discussion? Public, back to the council. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Now, where am I here? Counselor Higgins, can I please get you to read order seventy-two dash twenty twenty-four?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Order number seventy-two, twenty twenty-four, providing for public safety and protection, is ordered that two million, nine hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars is hereby raised and appropriated. The offices are authorized to spend set amount for the public safety and protection departments of Millinocket as listed below for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, public safety and protection. Line two oh one, police, eight hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight seventy-four. Two oh three, fire, ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and nineteen. Two oh four, ambulance, two hundred and forty-three thousand, five twenty-eight. Two oh five, fire and ambulance general, one million, thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and six. Two oh six, community services, five hundred and eighty-three thousand, one eighty-two. Two oh nine, insurances, hundred and nineteen thousand, two ninety. Two fourteen, dog constable, fifteen thousand, six hundred and sixteen, for total of two million, nine hundred and forty-two thousand, five fifteen.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Higgins, second by Counselor McGowan. Any council discussion on the order? Public, back to the council. All in favor? It's unanimous. Counselor Danforth, can I please get you to read order number seventy-three dash twenty twenty-four?
Yes, order number seventy-three dash twenty twenty. Yes, order number seventy-three dash twenty twenty four, providing for public works and airport departments. This is the new total. It is ordered that two million, five hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars is hereby raised and appropriated, and the officers are authorized to spend said amounts for the public works and airport departments of Millinocket as listed below for the fiscal year twenty twenty five. Public works at airport. Line four oh two, public works administration, one hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars. Line four oh three, public works garage, thirty-eight thousand, five hundred. Line four oh seven, public works roads, one million, five hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and forty-six. Line four oh nine, transfer site, five hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six. Line nine oh two cemetery, seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven. Line one one zero one, airport operations, two oh two, two hundred and two thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars. Line one one zero two, airport business, eighty-five thousand, six hundred dollars, for a grand total of two million, five hundred and fifty-six dollars, seven hundred and seventy-three, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars. Second.
Motion made by Councilor Danforth, second by Councilor McGowan. Any council discussion on the order? Down to the public. Back to the council, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Councilor McGowan, can I please get you to read order seventy-four dash twenty twenty four?
Yes, order number seventy-four dash twenty twenty four, providing for community and recreation services. It is ordered that five hundred thirty-nine thousand, fifty-one dollars is hereby raised and appropriated. And the officers are authorized to spend said amount for the community and recreation services departments of Millinocket as listed below for the fiscal year twenty twenty five. Five oh one, library, one hundred and fifty thousand. Eight fifteen, general assistance aid, seventeen thousand, one hundred and fifty. Eight sixteen, public health welfare agency, ten thousand, four fifteen. One zero zero two, recreation, two hundred and seven thousand, nine eighty-six. One zero zero nine, snowmobile and ATV program, one hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred. And one one oh six, holiday observation and events, twenty thousand, for a total of five hundred thirty-nine thousand, fifty-one dollars.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor McGowan, second by Councilor Higgins. Any council discussion on the order? Down to the public. Back to the council, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Councilor Danforth, could you please read order number seventy-five dash twenty twenty four?
Yes, order number seventy-five dash twenty twenty four, providing for debt and interest. It is ordered that a hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and four dollars is hereby raised and appropriated, and the officers are authorized to spend said amount for the debt services and interest department of Millinocket as listed below for the fiscal year twenty twenty five. Debt and interest, seven hundred, debt and interest, one hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and four dollars.
Second. Motion made by Councilor Danforth, second by Chair Medor. Any council discussion on the order? Down to the public. Back to the council, all in favor? It's unanimous. Order number seventy-six dash twenty twenty four, providing for capital improvement department. It is ordered that one hundred and sixty-nine thousand is hereby raised and appropriated, and the officers are authorized to spend said amount for the capital improvements department of Millinocket as listed below for the fiscal year twenty twenty five. Capital improvement departments, line one three zero zero, capital improvements, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand. One three zero one, special capital improvements, zero, total, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Medor, second by, uh, Chair Medor, second by Councilor Danforth. Any council discussion on the order? Down to the public. Back to the council, all in favor? It's unanimous. Councilor DeMay, can I please have you read order seventy-seven dash twenty twenty four?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Order number seventy-seven dash twenty twenty four, providing for anticipated revenues and transfers. It is ordered that the overall anticipated revenues and transfers in the estimated amount of five million, two hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-four is approved, and the officers are authorized to spend FY twenty twenty five.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor DeMay, second by Councilor Higgins. Any council discussion on the order? Down to the public. Back to the council, all in favor? It's unanimous. Councilor Higgins, can I please have you read order number seventy-eight dash twenty twenty four?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Order number seventy-eight, twenty twenty four. Providing for transfer of funds for designated dog fee revenue reserve account for the care of animals. It is ordered that four thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars be transferred from the designated dog fee revenue reserve account into the general fund budget for FY twenty twenty five to provide for eligible costs in the care of animals. Note, these funds are already included in the order authorizing anticipated revenues and transfers. This order is offered because the funds will be taken from the designated reserve account, which requires some specific town council approval.
Motion made by Councilor Higgins, second by Councilor DeMay. Any council discussion on the order? Down to the public. Back to the council, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Councilor Mackin, can I please get you to read order seventy-nine dash twenty twenty four?
Providing for transfer of funds from fund balance account. It is ordered that two hundred thousand be transferred from the assigned fund balance into the general fund budget for, um, FY twenty five. These funds are already included in the order authorizing anticipated revenues and transfers. This order is offered because the funds will be taken from an assigned and unassigned fund balance accounts, which requires specific town council approval.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Mackin, second by Councilor Higgins. Any council discussion on the order? Down to the public. Back to the council, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Councilor McGowan, can I please get you to read order eighty dash twenty twenty four?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order number eighty dash twenty twenty four, providing for authorization for county tax. It is ordered that three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars is hereby raised and appropriated, and to authorize the officers officers to spend for twelve oh one county tax assessment for FY twenty twenty five.
Motion made by Councilor McGowan, second by Councilor DeMay. Any council discussion on the action? Down to the public. Back to the council, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Councilor Danforth, could you please read order eighty-one dash twenty twenty four?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Order number eighty-one dash twenty twenty four, providing for acceptance of of state of main funds. It is ordered that the town of Millinocket, town finance director and town treasurer is authorized to accept, and such acceptance is deemed to have been appropriated revenues and or subsidies for the ensuing but, um, fiscal year, such funds as municipal revenue sharing funds, local road assistance program, general purpose aid to education, civil emergency funds, snowmobile registration money, tree growth reimbursement, general assistance reimbursement, veteran exception reimbursement, homestead act reimbursement, state and federal grants and aid, and other state of main funds as are available at a future date, and to authorize the officers to spend said sums. These monies are currently anticipated in the above revenue order, and allows the town to accept these monies for use with fiscal year twenty twenty five proposed budget. Acceptance of any new monies will be authorized only by council order.
Second.
Very good. Motion made by Councilor Danforth, second by Councilor DeMay, slash Higgins, uh, any council discussion on the order? Seeing none on the public. Back to the council, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Order number eighty-two dash twenty twenty four, not that I would ask anybody else to do this, that I wouldn't do myself. Order eighty, order number eighty-two dash twenty twenty four, providing for a written policy concerning disbursement of state fees. Whereas Title thirty dash A, section five six oh three, requires that the treasurer disburse money only on the authority of a warrant signed and voted on by the majority of the council, and whereas chapter twenty-nine A of the administrative code provides for the warrant review and approval, and whereas the town collects certain fees from the state of Maine, and whereas the council is not able to meet weekly to review, sign, and vote on warrants for fees due to the state of Maine, and whereas chapter twenty-nine A of the administrative code does not address the need to permit to remit state fees on a weekly basis, and whereas Title thirty A, section five six oh three dash three, provides that the council may adopt a written policy to permit the disbursement of state fees when the disbursement warrant has been signed by one or more designated municipal officials. Now therefore, it is ordered that the following written adoption concerning the disbursement of state fees. One, the treasurer shall prepare a warrant weekly to disburse state fees. Two, the weekly warrant for fees shall be reviewed and approved by the finance director. Three, upon approval of the weekly fee warrants for state fees by the financial director, any member of the ad hoc warrant subcommittee established pursuant to chapter twenty-nine A of the administrative code may review and approve the weekly warrant for state fees and document his or her approval by signing the warrant. Number four, the treasurer is authorized to disburse state fees each week upon presentation of a warrant for that purpose, which has been approved by the finance director and signed by any member of the ad hoc warrant subcommittee. Five, any or error in any weekly warrant for state fees shall be corrected by the treasurer on the next weekly warrant for state fees after discovering the error. Number six, warrants for the state fees approved pursuant to this policy are not subject to review and approval pursuant to chapter twenty dash A of the administrative code, and yes.
Suspend the rest of them.
Yes.
The rest of the reading of the order.
If you, if you insist, certainly. And it is done.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Medor, second by Councilor Higgins. Any council discussion on the order? Never let it be said the chairman didn't take one for the team. Down to the public. Back to the council, all those in favor? You better raise your hand. Alrighty. Councilor DeMay, will you please read order eighty-three dash twenty twenty four?
With pleasure, Mr. Chairman. Order number eighty-three dash twenty twenty four, providing for the disbursement of employee wages and benefits. Whereas the town treasurer may disburse monies only on the authority of a warranted voted and signed by the majority of the council, whereas the council signs warrants on a bi-weekly basis, and whereas employees are paid on a weekly basis. Now therefore, it is ordered that pursuant to Title thirty A, section five six zero three point two point A point one, that the town treasurer is authorized to disburse wages and withholding required by law on the authority of the warrant signed by the town manager.
Second.
You beat you to it. Motion made by Councilor DeMay, second by Councilor Higgins. Any council discussion on the warrant? Not the order, I mean. Down to the public. Back to the council, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Alrighty. Councilor Higgins, could you please read order number eighty-four dash twenty twenty four?
Order number eighty-four, twenty twenty four, providing for payment of property taxes for multiple years. Is ordered that we, the municipal, municipal officers of the town of Millinocket, upon request of the tax collector and town treasurer of said town, hereby authorize and direct said tax collector and town treasurer pursuant to Title thirty-six, MRSA, section nine oh six, to apply any tax payment received from an individual as a, as payment for any property tax against outstanding or delinquent taxes due on said property in chronological order, beginning with the oldest unpaid tax bill, provided however, that no such payment may be applied to any tax for which an abatement, application, or appeal is pending unless approved in writing by the taxpayer.
Motion made by Councilor Higgins, second by Councilor DeMay. Any council discussion on the order? Seeing none down the public. Back to the council, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Councilor Mackin, would you please read order eighty-five dash twenty twenty four?
Order eighty-five, twenty twenty four, providing for wastewater department anticipated revenues and transfers. It is ordered that the overall anticipated revenues and transfers as listed below in the estimated amount of one million, eighty-nine thousand, is approved for FY twenty twenty five for the wastewater department.
You need to read.
Twenty-one zero zero dash one four zero zero fees, one million, fifty thousand dollars. Fourteen oh one, interest, thirty day notice, ten thousand. Fourteen oh two, investment interest, sixteen thousand. Fourteen oh three, lean, lean cost revenue, ten thousand. Fourteen oh four, miscellaneous zero. Fourteen oh five, grant, zero. Fourteen oh six, bond proceeds, zero. Twenty-five, zero zero dash zero five one two, WWRV dump, three thousand, for a total of one million, eighty-nine thousand.
Second.
I, yeah, I know. Motion made by Councilor Mackin, second by Councilor Higgins. Any council discussion on the order? You tell people getting tired. Down to the public. Back to the council, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Councilor McGowan, can I please have you read order eighty-six dash twenty twenty four?
Certainly. Order number eighty-six dash twenty twenty four, providing for wastewater department operations. It is ordered that one million, forty-seven thousand, seventy-four dollars is hereby appropriated for wastewater operations expenditures for FY twenty twenty five for the departments listed below. Twenty-one hundred, administration, one hundred and eight thousand, four hundred. Twenty-two hundred, protection, insurance, thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six. Twenty-four hundred, operations of plant, four hundred and one thousand, nine eighty-four. Twenty-five hundred, pump stations, eighty-four thousand, three hundred. Twenty-six hundred, collection, forty-five thousand, two hundred. Twenty-seven hundred, debt service, two hundred and fifteen thousand, four thirty-four. Twenty-eight hundred, capital improvements for one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, for a total of one million, forty-seven thousand, seventy-four.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor McGowan, second by Councilor Higgins. Any council discussion on the order? The public. Back to the council, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Councilor Danforth, can I please get you to read order eighty-seven dash twenty twenty four?
Yes, order number eighty-seven dash twenty twenty four, providing for payment of sewer bills for multiple bills. It is ordered that the municipal officers of the town of Millinocket, upon request of the tax collector and town treasurer of said town, hereby authorize and direct said tax collector and town treasurer to credit sewer payments to accounts in the same manner as real estate payments. And whereas, real estate tax payments are well allocated to the oldest outstanding tax bill, and whereas the statutory reference in section one oh four dash sixteen of the sewer ordinance has not been updated to reflect repeal of Title thirty MRSA and enactment of Title thirty dash A. Now therefore, it, it is ordered as follows. The tax collector and town treasurer are hereby directed to credit payments for sewer system use charges in chronological order, beginning with the oldest unpaid sewer system use charge, provided however, that no such payment may be applied to any charge for which an abatement, application, or appeal is pending unless approved in writing by the sewer fee payer. It is further ordered that the sewage system fees, rates, fees, or use, user charges not paid within ninety days of when, when due, shall be collected in accordance with chapter one oh four, section one oh four dash sixteen of the Millinocket Code entitled thirty dash A, MRSA, section three four zero six.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Danforth, second by Councilor McGowan. Any council discussion on the order? The public. Back to the council, all those in favor? I would like to take the next opportunity to go ahead and, uh, offer to table orders eighty-eight through one oh eight to return to the school board for reconsideration.
Second.
Motion made by Chair Medor, second by Councilor Danforth. Uh, there is no discussion. All those in favor? Oposed. Five one. Alrighty. I don't make a noise. Alrighty. Councilor Danforth, could I please have you read order one oh nine dash twenty twenty four, even though it was two oh two?
Order number one oh nine dash twenty twenty four, providing for execution of the town warrant.
Excuse me, I'm very good.
Yeah.
Order number one oh nine dash twenty twenty four, providing for execution of the town warrant for April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty four. It is ordered that the town warrant for April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty four, in the amount of one hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars and sixty-two cents is hereby approved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Danforth, second by Councilor Higgins. Any council discussion on the order? All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Any discussion on the order?
Councilor DeMay, can go ahead with the heavy hitters.
Would you like to have Councilor DeMay go ahead?
He was on the warrant committee. Yes, thank you very much.
He's, she's giving him up to you.
Excellent. Order number.
This is order.
Oh, no, I got them.
You got them?
Yeah. I don't need her heavy hitters, I have my own.
Alright.
Ah, heavy. Ah, heavy hitters for this one are five thousand one hundred dollars to the Holton Fire Department. I'd like to thank them for helping you, Chief, with the with their response, and also for their for their administration for cutting that in half, essentially, and so that was a benefit to the town.
Absolutely.
Eighty-four, zero one sixty-four for Hoyle Tanner and Associates for the airport grant. One hundred twenty-five thousand five hundred and forty-four zero four for insurances of the staff. Five thousand five hundred seven dollars and ninety-four cents for the transfer site fill cost. And twelve thousand six hundred fifty-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents for electricity from person.
Can I have a second?
Yeah.
Oh, you want to add more?
I know you had mentioned the the insurance for staff. It was not just for staff. It was for airport property, town property, our fleet of vehicles, general liability, public officials. So it was.
Okay.
Thank you for expounding upon that.
Alright. Any other council discussion on the order? Seeing none down the public, back to the council. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Alrighty, Council Demay, since you did such a wonderful job with that one, would you like to take or crack at order one-ten?
I'm gonna give it my best effort. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order number one-ten dash twenty twenty four, providing for execution of the wastewater warrant for April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty four. It is now ordered that the wastewater warrant for April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty four, in the amount of one hundred twenty-two thousand dollars, nine hundred thirty-two and thirty cents is hereby approved.
Second.
Motion made by Council Demay, second by Council Danforth. Any council discussion on the order? Council McGowan, I'm sorry.
Council Higgins.
I took this second right away from you. Seeing none, anybody from the public, back to the council. All those in favor?
Well, do you want a heavy hitter?
Well, sure, if you've got one.
I have two. That I'd gladly be able to speak on these.
Alrighty.
Thirty-three thousand three hundred ninety-eight dollars and ninety-six cents to the Millinocket Insurance Agency, and that's for insurance. And nine thousand three hundred forty-five dollars and fifty-two cents to Versant Power for electricity.
Thank you. Thank you. Again, any council, any public council comment? Down to the public, back to the council. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Council Higgins, can I please get you to read order one, one hundred and eleven dash twenty twenty four?
Order one eleven, twenty twenty four, providing for.
Yes, ma'am. Are you adjusted? Yes, thank you very much. Yep, so do I. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Yes, this, just for this order, Madam Clerk, are we moving all the next three? Okay, I would like to make a motion that we table orders one eleven to one thirteen until the next council meeting.
Second.
Motion made by Council Chair Mador, second by Council Higgins. All those in favor? Opposed? Five one. Alrighty. Councilor Mackin. Only because I've got them written down already, would you please read order one twelve dash twenty twenty four? Oh, we're one fourteen. That's right. We've just passed that. One fourteen. Would you please read order one fourteen?
Am I doing one twelve?
One fourteen.
One fourteen. Yep, we just tabled all those other orders. I just did that. I didn't pay attention.
Order number one fourteen, twenty twenty four, providing for approval of appointments to the Board of Appeals. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council approves the appointment appointment of Charles Prey and David Sorsier to the Board of Appeals for a three-year term to expire April thirtieth, twenty twenty seven. Applications were received for twenty-two, twenty twenty four, and for twenty-three, twenty twenty four, and are the only applications on file. If approved, the board will have a full committee commitment.
Motion made by Council Mackin, second by Council Higgins. Any council discussion on the order? I would like to thank, oh, certainly. Yes, go right ahead, Council Demay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I enthusiastically support this order by Council Mackin and encourage the rest of my councils to do as well.
Thank you. Any other council comment? I would like to thank both people for putting their names in and serving the community on this board, and I appreciate both persons who have done that. So, going down to the public. Back to the council. All those in favor? Alrighty. Council Demay, will you please read order one fifteen dash twenty twenty four?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order number one fifteen dash twenty twenty four, providing for approval of an appointment to the Personal Appeals Board. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council approves the appointment of Charles Prey to the Personal Appeals Board for a three-year term to expire April thirtieth, twenty twenty seven. Note, the application was received on four twenty-two, twenty twenty four, and is the only application on file. If approved, the board will have a full commitment.
Second.
Motion made by Council Demay, second by Council McGowan. Any council discussion on the order? Council Danforth.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, I know Mr. Prey is on, although we can't see his face, but I just want to thank him personally for, like, now he's on two boards representing the town. Appreciate his service, huge service to the town. Thank you.
Any other council comment? Down to the public, back to the council. All those in favor?
There he is.
It is unanimous. Congratulations, Council Prey.
Counselor.
Former counselor. Alrighty. Council Higgins, can I please get you to read order one sixteen dash twenty twenty four? He was just, I also saw his tongue too, which does him.
I think he wants to give us his brother.
Alright, Council Prey, would, former Council Prey, would you like to speak? No, okay. Alright, Council Higgins, can I please get you read order one sixteen dash twenty twenty four?
Order one sixteen, twenty twenty four, providing for approval of an application for a vicular license for Daigle Soft Serve M F T. It is ordered that the attached application for the vicular license is approved for Jeff Daigle, Norcross, M F T, Millinocket, doing business as Daigle Soft Serve, M F T, Bandstand, Veterans Memorial Park, Millinocket.
Second.
Motion made by Council Higgins, second by Council Demay, just by a hair over Council McGowan. Alright, any discussion on this order? Down to the public, back to the council. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Oh, no, don't, don't ever do that again. Councilor Mackin, can you please read order one seventeen dash twenty twenty four? Please. Don't make me beg.
Okay, seventeen?
Yes, please.
Order number one seventeen, twenty twenty four, providing for approval of an application for a particular license for a Steve's Hot Dog Cart, M F C. It is ordered that the attached application for Victoria hereby approved. Steve Moore, fourth sixty-seventh, Penobscot Avenue, M F C, Millinocket, doing business as Steve's Hot Dog Cart, M F C, Millinocket.
Motion made by Council Mackin, second by Council Higgins. Is there any council discussion? Seeing none down the public, back, oh, yes, okay. Certainly. We've.
Town Clerk Diana Lake Man, since it wasn't asked, I I just, I didn't put the location
Okay.
on the order, because it is a local food car, and assuming that you saw his request on the application.
Thank you.
I just wanted to draw attention to that.
Okay. Any other council comment, public comment? Seeing none. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Council McGowan, can I please get you to read one eighteen dash twenty twenty four in the straightest space that you can manage?
Yes, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Oh, it's way past my bedtime. Providing for, order number one eighteen dash twenty twenty four, providing for approval of an application for a victual license for Hillcrest Golf Club. It is ordered that the attached application for a victual license is hereby approved for Hillcrest Golf Course, one golf course road, Millinocket, doing business as Hillcrest Golf Club, one golf course road, Millinocket.
Second.
Motion made by Council McGowan, second by Council Higgins. Any council discussion on the order? Seeing none down the public, back to the council. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Councilor Danforth, would you please read order one nineteen dash twenty twenty four?
My pleasure. Order number one nineteen dash twenty twenty four. In order providing for general obligation bond for upgrades to the main pump station, be it ordered that under and that under and pursuant to the provisions of Title thirty dash A, Sections five seven two-two and five seven two-two of the main revised statutes as amended in the Charter of the Town of Millinocket, Maine, a capital improvement project consistent of upgrades to the main pump station, including transaction costs and other expenditures reasonably related to the project, are hereby approved, and be it further ordered that a sum not to exceed one million six hundred and seventy dollars, six hundred and seventy thousand dollars is hereby appropriated to provide for the cost of said project, less forgiveness of up to five thousand dollars. Be it further ordered that to fund said appropriation, the treasurer and the chair of the town council are hereby authorized to issue at one time or from time to time, general obligation securities of the town, included callable securities with or without premium and temporary notes in anticipation of the sale thereof, and an aggregate principal amount of one million six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And be it further ordered that the that the discretion to fix the dates, maturities, and denominations, interest rates, places of payment, forms, and other details of said securities, including execution and delivery of said securities against payment, therefore, and to provide for the sale thereof, is hereby delegated to the treasurer and the chair. And be it further ordered that the town hereby irrevocably pledges the user fees, rates, assessments, and other charges of the town for the payment of the debt service on the on the bond. Be it further ordered that the town hereby makes a general obligation pledge of its property tax revenues to be used in the event that the sewer and stormwater rates, user fees, assessments, and other charges levied on and paid by tax ratepayers are not sufficient to meet the annual payments of principal and the semi-annual payments of interest on said securities until the debt created by the the issuance and sale of said securities is extinguished.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Council Danforth, second by Council McGowan. Any council discussion on the order? Seeing none down the public, back to the council. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Council Demay, would you please read order number one twenty dash twenty twenty four?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Order number one twenty twenty dash twenty twenty four, providing for the approval of a bid award for wastewater main pump station upgrade. Whereas, the town of Millinocket held a bid opening on March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty four for work pertaining to the necessary upgrades to the main pump station, where one bid was received and reviewed. It is ordered that Millinocket Town Council, at the recommendation of the town manager, Wastewater Superintendent and Oliver Associates Inc. awards the attached bid to Teabuck Construction of Turner Main. Bitter Teabuck Construction bid three million five hundred eighty thousand three hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Second.
Motion made by Council Demay, second by Council Higgins. Any council discussion on the order? Seeing none down the public, back to the council. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Reports and communications, warrant committee for the May ninth twenty twenty four council meeting will be Council Higgins and Council Mackin. All right for both of you?
Yep.
Thank you. Chair Committee reports. Seeing none. We're down to the two-minute public comment. Is anyone has anything that they would like to say? Now would be the time. Seeing none, entertaining motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Council McGowan, second by Council Danforth. Any council discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? We are unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.